Kerrville City Council is called to order. And we're going to have the invocation and then the salute, pledge to the flag. If you'll introduce.
Mario was gonna give the invocation.
I want to thank you, Lord, for this opportunity that we here can be and be a presence to you and to always stay true to your love and that may you continue to guide us as adults and find the path to least resistance. I want to thank you for our leaders here. May they continue to grow and ask for wisdom and to guide us. I want to thank you for our first responders, many of the leaders here. May you keep them out of harm's way this year and continue to guide them and keep them safe. I want to thank you for the city employees and you watch over their health and watch over their families so they're able to continue to serve this community. I want to thank you for all the adults, as I've left my son who's having a baseball practice, all the adults who have surrounded themselves with these children and watched over our children in this community. I want to thank you, Lord, for everyone in this room and for those who cannot be here. Watch over our community and continue to guide us into wisdom and love. And I ask all this in law said. Amen.
Amen.
May I have kayak lead us in the pledge?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
At this time, I want to remind you that if you are going to speak to an item in the council meeting, you need to fill out a speaker's form. And you had the opportunity to do that as you came in. But if during the meeting, if you decide to speak on an item you haven't signed up for, you still need to sign up before you speak. Recently, we've had folks just coming to the mic and speaking, but to really keep things in order, we need to make sure that you fill out that form and information prior to speaking. And that everyone is to be recognized before they speak, including the council. All right, announcements of community interest.
Thank you, Mayor, and welcome to everybody tonight. Mayor, in our last meeting, you outlawed Cedar. I'm just taking it back. Still waiting on that. We'll get on with our announcements. The Kerrville Parks and Recreation, just want to point out, they're currently taking registration for adult football, soccer, kickball leagues. Playing the football and soccer leagues begins the first week in February and playing the kickball league begins in mid-March. We had a great turnout in all three of these leagues last year and we're expecting even better things this time around. So if you want to register for that, contact the Parks and Recreation Department. Ashley wanted me to point out that we also need referees. However, there is a prerequisite, you do know how, you have to know how to call pass interference.
Yes, you do.
All right, a couple of things going on this week at the library. We have a guest speaker, Susan Seibert. This is on Thursday at 6:00 PM and she will talk about how to get rid of clutter in your home. I'm just gonna hire her to come over to my house and skip this. Hopefully, she can help us out. On Saturday, the library invites parents and children to bring a stuffed animal or doll to our fifth annual stuffed animal sleepover, which happens from 4:30 to 5:30 PM, again, that's Saturday. Pajamas are welcome and after a story and craft, the animals and dolls will be tucked into bed and the children can come back the next day between 1:00 and 5:00 PM and discover all the mischief that they've been up to throughout the night. Both of these events are free and open to the public, a lot of fun, so encourage you to come on by. And finally, we still have tickets remaining for the 11th Annual Daddy and Daughter Sweetheart Dance. We've given away, or not given away, I'm sorry, we've sold 400 and there's about 500 to 550 available. It's a great event, a lot of fun. We're gonna have another giveaway. We had a free giveaway of tickets last week and we're gonna have another one tomorrow on Facebook. If you'll pay attention sometime during the day, it'll be out there. So watch for our Facebook site. All right, thank you very much.
Okay. Any other announcements of community interest in these or this is not related to the agenda? It is special events coming up and so forth?
I have one.
I also have one.
Okay, you got one? All right.
I'd like to put a plug in for the Citizens Police Academy. Begins on Tuesday, February 19th, a 12-week course. Fun, you learn a lot, don't have to take a test at the end, so it's an excellent course. So if you've got some extra time, I would highly encourage you to do that. We've got a great, great group of, in our, just a great group of guys in our police force. And you get to know them and you get to know what they do, so very educational.
Okay.
I have kind of a long line with Stuart bringing up. Little League registrations are ongoing right now also and you can do that online at www.kerrvillelittleleague.com. Or we're actually registering at the mall this weekend, be the last one in person, from 10:00 to 4:00 on Saturday and 1:00 to 4:00 on Sunday. That's all I got.
Okay, all right, all right. Okay, visitors and citizens forum. And citizens are allowed to speak on any item not already listed on the agenda. No discussion may take place or action taken. Since items are not posted, the council cannot respond to questions but may refer questions to staff or place an issue on a future agenda. And you have four minutes if anyone, have anyone to speak.
Yes, sir. Charlie McElvein?
Sorry?
Charlie McElvein.
Okay, oh yeah.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. I'm Charlie McElvein, President and CEO of the Kerrville Convention and Visitors Bureau and addresses 2108 Sidney Baker. Tonight, it's my pleasure to make a presentation that's a first in this particular category. Of course, we've just come off a week-long stock show that was extremely successful, a lot of great livestock and projects that the students produced. But one of the kickoff event for that, for that project is the annual Cowboy Breakfast. We had a new activity this year. We did away with the cow chip toss for elected officials and went, moved into a program called the Bouncy Horse Competition. And that was a competition between the Commissioners Court and the City Council. This year, the City Council won and the winning council member was council member vocal. And tonight, we're here to present the traveling trophy. It stays here at City Hall this year and then.
Would you go receive it?
Sure.
And then if you can continue to do this next year, it'll stay at City Hall another year. So, Councilman, congratulations.
Thank you.
Okay.
We know you'll have that proudly presented, this played here in City Hall.
Yeah, yeah, good. Okay. We have a presentation to make tonight by Chief Knight. And I'm going to go down for the presentation and I would like for all of the council members, if you would, to join me.
Oh, okay, okay.
Mayor and Council, it's always a pleasure to, and an honor, to come forward and honor one of our officers whenever they do an excellent job. And this is for the Officer of the Year for 2018. The Officer of the Year for the Kerrville Police Department 2018 is Officer Tyler Cottonware. Tyler is currently assigned to the Patrol Unit Field Operations Division and has performed his duties in an exemplary manner for this year. During this entire year, Officer Cottonware is an assigned intoxicilizer operator and a field training officer for our department and new officers. He's entrusted with training all of our newly hired officers along with several other FTOs in addition to his regular duties. He has become a leader within the department, earning respect through performance, productive, productivity and job knowledge. He demonstrates daily his commitment to this community through quality performance and devotion to duty. He takes significant pride in his work and his consistency and productivity is evident. Over the course of this year, Officer Cottonware performed in the top 1.5% of all officers in the categories of call for service responses, incident reports, in custody arrests, warnings and traffic citations. It's notable that in spite of not receiving recognition for arrests made by his trainees during the time when he was operating as a field training officer, Officer Cottonware was still able to make 104 arrests during this last year. Since being assigned to patrol in June of 2015, Officer Cottonware has conducted numerous traffic accident investigations as well. He's an extremely productive officer. Through his dedication to duty, his ability for reason and to make sound decisions and his commitment to the department and the citizens we serve, Tyler has become an officer that others look up to, both on duty and off duty for guidance and assistance. He knows and strives to achieve goals and objectives in the department and he does so on a daily basis. Tyler has time again put forth an outstanding effort that exceeds department expectations. He leads by example and exhibits a work ethic that represents the department's strong commitment to the community's safety. His knowledge and commitment to the community has established a benchmark of performance that is difficult to equal. It's for these reasons that we selected Officer Tyler Cottonware as Officer of the Year for 2018 for the Kerrville Police Department. I would also say that on top of being a highly professional officer who does his job day in and day out in, at a very high competency level, off duty, he is one of the most humble, personable individuals that you would ever meet. And, you know, those are qualities that quite frankly, really don't attribute to police officers very often, but he carries it off extremely well. So as is, are normal for what we do for Officer of the Year, we present him the Officer of the Year Award, but we also present him with a police commendation award as well, Officer
He is a family man and he's a local here as well, so his wife and two children.
Where's the family? Now, I would like to call on the city manager for a recognition and introduction.
Just real quick, Mayor, we do have somebody new to the team that we want to introduce to you tonight, Sherry Mosier, who is our new manager for strategic initiatives. Sherry has over 20 years of experience in land use and entitlements, land development, government and community relations, real estate transactions and law. She comes to us from the Bolverde Spring Branch area where she saw, oversaw the day-to-day operations of the Economic Development Corporation in that area. So Sherry, why don't you come to the podium and say a few words?
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Is this on? Okay, good evening, Mayor and Council, and thank you for this opportunity. I'm glad to be here. A little bit about my background, as city manager indicated, I was formerly the president of the Bolverde Spring Branch Economic Development Foundation, just short of six years as of last Friday. And prior to that, I was the Economic Development Director for the City of Windcrest. And prior to that, I worked for a law firm for seven years, Earland Associates in San Antonio, and we did land use and entitlements, water rights, and I also did 11 TURSes while I was with that organization. And so got a pretty, pretty good wealth of experience and I look forward to taking on the challenge.
Good, good, thank you, welcome.
Glad to have you.
All right, all right. I do, I do want to note something. Do we have a trend, the deputy city manager is from Bolverde and Sherry's from Bolverde?
Could be a connection.
Yeah. Could be.
We worked together four years.
Oh, all right, okay, okay. Okay, we now move to the consent agenda and these are items that are routine in nature. And Brown, if you would read them in.
The consent agenda items are considered routine and can be approved in one motion unless a council member asks for separate consideration of an item. It is recommended that the City Council approve the following items, which will grant the mayor, our city manager, the authority to take all actions necessary for each approval. There are two items. One is to authorize the execution of a professional services agreement with Hewitt Engineering and the other are the minutes for January 8th.
I'd like to remove 4A, if that's okay.
Go ahead.
I'd like to remove 4A. I just have a suggestion on it.
Okay. You want to pull 4A?
Yes, sir.
I need to pull 4B.
All right, we'll pull 4A, that leaves us with 4B.
I need to pull 4B also.
I hear a motion.
I need to pull 4B also.
Okay, so we're gonna pull both items. All right, then let's go to 4A first.
4A, I just wanted to suggest using local surveying companies, if you could, but everything else seems to be fine.
All right, anything else on 4A?
No, I concur with that as well.
All right, do I hear, do I have a motion on 4A?
I move that we accept the professional services agreement with Hewitt Engineering for the River Trail Extension to Shriner University.
All right.
Second.
Okay, we got a second. All in favor of that motion, let it be known by the raised hand. Okay, it is unanimous. Okay, let's go to 4B.
As Brown made one of the corrections already, but the consent agenda that's listed in our minutes, I believe are from different meeting. So we would need to set them up as being from the January 8th meeting. I think they're listing the ones from December 11th. But then, also, we had in 5A, I made a motion to go into executive session and it was actually only under 551087. That was all that was posted and was all that I motioned for. And then 9B, this is, this is, 9B is council's fault, most assuredly, but it was that appointment of the Charter Review Commission, but John Harrison was voting in on a 3-2 vote, not a 5-0 vote. And item 12, action items discussed in executive session, the items that are listed in there I think belong under future, I think they were future agenda items. But with those.
Could I ask you which one you first mentioned that?
The first one is the consent agenda listed in the minutes appear to be the consent agenda items from the December 11th meeting.
I'm reading the one from December 11th and it's different.
What agenda do you see, what agenda, three agenda?
Yeah, I got December 11th pulled up, joint election agreement between the city and Kerr County, is that on there?
And this is not what that hour says.
What do you have in your possession, because the packet I got was?
Well, that I motioned to approve the items in the consent agenda and Mrs. Zeichner seconded it, that's the first one.
Right.
And then joint election agreement between the City of Kerrville and Kerr County for the May 4th city general.
Right, we didn't do that in January 8th, we did that on December 11th.
That's December 11th. I just pulled it up there granted, in case you can go back and pull up the agenda and those items are on the December 11th.
Is this not on the, okay.
Mayor, may I suggest that, given the number of suggested changes, that we pull this off the agenda and bring it back?
Yeah, yeah, let's do it, because this is gonna take some time and we got a lot to do. So, does that take a motion?
I'll motion that we table the minutes.
Okay, all right.
I'll second.
You got a second?
I'll second.
So we'll table the minutes for now, all right. Okay, then we go to.
Where are you gonna move the kayak up?
5A ordinance.
Mayor, need a vote?
I'm sorry, okay.
Table the minutes.
Table the minutes, there you go. Okay, I'm moving ahead. Okay, then 5A, Ms. Brown, if you'll read that in.
Were you gonna do that one or are you gonna move kayak up?
Do what?
Were you gonna move kayak up?
Ah, yes, thank you, okay. You're right. We're gonna move an item that is later on the agenda, the Youth Advisory Committee. We're gonna move that up, their presentation, because, and they've got a 10-minute presentation, they, some of the students have got other things to attend to, so if you'll go ahead and meet now. Okay.
Go ahead. Okay. Mayor and Council, I'm pleased to have the Kerrville Youth Advisory Committee here tonight to do their first report to the City Council. And with that, Roman, if you want to come on up?
Okay, thank you, Mayor and City Council. My name is Roman Garcia and I'm the Chair of the Kerrville Youth Advisory Committee. This is our first of hopefully three reports, we'll hopefully be giving you one in March and then last one in May at the end of our term. So before we start, I'd like to go ahead and get into our individual member introductions so everybody can just tell you who they are and what school they're from. So we'll go ahead and start.
Hi, my name's Grace Guerrero, I'm currently a junior at Tybee High School.
If you'll step to the podium so we can have the record.
Hi, my name is Grace Guerrero, I'm a junior at Tybee High School.
Hello, my name is, my name is Kirk Watson and I'm a senior at Tybee High School.
Hi, my name's Sara Deng and I'm currently a senior at Tybee High School.
My name is Emily Holycamp and I'm a junior at Tybee High School.
Hello, my name is Maria Hall and I'm also a senior at Tybee High School.
And like I said, my name is Roman Garcia and I am a homeschool senior. So first of all, real quick, just to go over our officers, like I said, I'm the Chair, Grace here is our Vice Chair, Kysara is our Secretary, and we added one extra officer position, which is our Public Relations Officer, who does the job of pretty much what the past Mr. Cunius did for us, is take pictures of all of our events and get them all compiled up for us for the year. So we added a position so we can have somebody who formally does that for us. Next, we'll move on to Grace and she'll go ahead and give her slides of presentation.
Good evening, Mayor Blackburn, City Council Members and all in attendance. My name is Grace Guerrero. I am the Vice Chair of the Kerrville Youth Advisory Council, also known as Kayak. Kayak was formed by former mayor and City Council with the goal to revive the youth of Kerrville with representation in our city government. Our purpose is to provide input to the City Council regarding needs and concerns of our city's youth. Did you know that nearly 20% of Kerrville city residents are under the age of 18? Despite the fact that the majority of us are unable to vote, we have a great interest in Kerrville's future. The decisions are made by city leaders today have a great impact on our future in 2050. Kayak consists of 15 members who are high school students as well as citizens in the city of Kerrville. Each prospective member goes through an application process where they, my bad, an application process where they answer questions about their reason for applying, vision for the future of Kerrville, of youth in Kerrville, and what ways they'll be beneficial to council. In Kayak, we not only improve our leadership skills, but we learn how the city's, city government works. We learn to listen to each other's input as we work together to problem solve. We also give back to the community through volunteer work and community need-based projects that not only benefit the youth but all citizens of Kerrville. Our council meets on the second and fourth Tuesday of each month at 4:30 PM in the upstairs conference room. Our meetings are open to the public and we invite you to attend. Thank you.
Thank you, Grace. Now, at this time, I will, we had another member who was supposed to come and speak to, she had a family emergency, so I'll just be stepping in for her real quick. So this is an overview of the projects and events that we have done. So first of all, we have a general subcommittee made up of five members who go on their own. Of course, there's 15 members, so we don't want all of us discussing all the ideas, there'd be so many. So we have a separate group for that. They come, they give us ideas for tours, guest speakers, projects and events that they feel that the kayak should consider based on the goals we set up at our first meeting. Our goals that we did set out were to not focus on so many projects, but to limit our focus on those that we really feel are necessary. So basically, as Maria has stated at our meeting, to focus on the quality over the quantity of the projects that we're gonna be doing. So as you see, we did start a little bit later than this here, as you know, so we haven't done as much as we can, but we do have bigger projects on the road. Some of those will consist of the music festival that we're hoping to help form, also as a Hispanic heritage. And so these other events that we have done though are the Family Friday Night, where we helped register people for the costume contest, the Kerrville Holiday Life Parade, where we walked in the parade in front of the big fire truck with Santa on top of it with, we held our kayak banner there and I'd like to thank Mrs. Moyes for getting that banner for us. We got the Reeds Across America Ceremony, where we attended the ceremony in honor of all those fallen and aided in laying the wreaths on all of the tombstones. And then our last one, which is actually the same day, was the Salvation Army Red Kettle fundraiser bell ringing, where members were there, you know, you've probably seen it, if you go to the stores, we were at Walgreens, ring the bell to collect donations for the Salvation Army. And here are just two of the pictures of those, the Reeds Across America Ceremony and the Salvation Army Red Kettle fundraiser bell right here.
Can I just ask a question on the, go back to that last slide?
You may, which is the pictures?
Uh huh.
Okay.
Somebody point to where the bell is. Are you guys ringing a bell at that thing?
One of them is holding it in her hand with the green shirt and I don't know where hers is, so she's.
Okay, all right, just wanted to make sure it was there.
Yeah. We will go ahead and we're gonna go to our, what's supposed to be our last slide and we'll go back to this one, so I'll hand it over to Maria.
So moving forward with our committee, some of the things we'd like to do as far as tours go is we'd love to tour the Kerr County Courthouse, the Kerrville Water Treatment Plant and the Mooney Aircraft Factory. And then as far as speakers, we'd love to hear from Josh Smithson, who's from Kerrville Young Life, Karen Guerrero, she's Animal Services Advisory Board Member. We'd love to hear from a Kerr County judge and also Ashley Boyle, who's the city's Director of Parks and Recreation.
Okay, so my name's Emily Holycamp and we're here to talk about the upcoming and ongoing projects and events. So some of the projects that we're working on right now is Tybee Teens for Life, which is an organ donation group, the Kerrville Music Festival, Kerrville Hispanic Heritage Festival, and. And some of the other events that we're looking at right now are the Texas Youth Advisory Commission Summit, the Pet Microchipping Clinic, Valentine's Day at the VA Medical Center, the National Donor Day Drive, and the Donation Booth at the Farmer's Market this Friday, January 25th. So we also want to talk about how Tybee Teens for Life, which is a subcommittee, which is the Organ Donation Subcommittee, has a few members, I'm the Chairman of this Subcommittee. Vice Chair is Grace Guerrero, we also have Gazelle Shriner, Molly Murphy, Kendall Brown, and Maria Hall, which are all also on this committee. So, right now, what the Organ Donation Subcommittee is trying to work on is we want to have a 5K in the Lehman Monroe Park, and we want to.
Okay, I'm sorry, go ahead.
Louise Hayes Park, the one with the River Trail, to be more specific, the one with the River Trail. So, I would like, we want to use this park to have a 5K in order to raise awareness for organ donation in the Kerrville kind of area, since in Kerrville, there is kind of a lack of information about organ donation. So with this 5K, we really want to kind of emphasize more on this is the nonprofit, this is not here to like gain money, this is just so you can kind of learn and become informed about organ donation, and also so that we can help kind of allow these people that have been touched by donation, whether that be becoming a donor family, becoming a donor, a recipient, or anything that has been touched by donation. So, we really want to have this kind of 5K that symbolizes that Kerrville is not only active, but we can also tie in different parts of the community into this 5K. For example, I was thinking about having the Tybee Choir come and kind of like sing the National Anthem, so you kind of bring Tybee into it, and then also, we were talking about having Kayak help volunteer with this, help kind of show that the Kayak group is committed, and they do want to help the community. So, from this, if you would like more information about the donor dash, we have some flyers if you're interested in that.
I have a question, the Donation Booth at Farmer's Market, is that distributing information, or, you know, about donating, donating an organ, and being a donor, is that, is that what that meant?
Yes, ma'am, so at these donor drives, which we already had two drives so far, but this was just with Tybee Teens for Life, it's where there's sort of a booth setting, where you can find information packets, you can get kind of little like goodies, like pins and stuff, and you can not only get information about this, but you can also sign up to become a donor. It's very, very easy to become a donor, due to the fact that I just have to scan your license with an app, and you will automatically become a donor, or it will say that you are a donor. We also have paper forms if you do not have a license or permit.
Right.
Yes, and would you all be interested in these?
Sure.
Sure.
Yeah.
That's a great place to have it, at the market, that's a great venue to get to a lot of people.
Yes, this is a really good group, I would say.
Yes, and so for the city's involvement with this, really, we would try to need to get permission, try to get the city more involved, and using, like she said, we would use the River Trail for that. Another thing was to use, I believe you wanted to use the pavilion, and that was at the Lehman Monroe Park, the large pavilion.
Okay, but this is not with Kayak, using pavilion is with Tybee High School, not Kayak.
So, that basically concludes our presentation, so unless you have any questions or comments that we may be able to answer, that is it for us. Any questions?
I have one.
Yes, ma'am, Mrs. Seager.
How's it working with the twice-a-month commitment, as it relates to your current committee members, and the interest from possibly newcomers who might be worried about twice a month with all their other activities? I'm just curious, we talked about that at the last meeting, I'm just checking in to see how that was working.
Would a member like to speak about that? Grace, you can, it's my turn.
As far as I know, we've actually had a great turnout and attendance considered to last year, when we did have one meeting per month, so that's.
Okay, well, attendance really says it all.
Our meeting attendance has actually not dropped, we've had a quorum at every single member, every single meeting, I'm sorry, so I think we're doing a great job considering where we are right now, yes, ma'am.
Good.
Anything else?
Good, thank you very much.
Thank you, I really appreciate your time.
Okay. All right. Brown, five A ordinance?
Ordinance number 2019-05, amending ordinance 2018-32 by adding three positions to the number of members of the Senior Services Advisory Committee, appointment to, of a Chair and Vice Chair, and setting term expressions for the current 13 members. And I believe that the Mayor is supposed to set the Chair and Vice Chair.
Yes, I have a, I have a Chairman, and I don't, I don't have a call back from the Vice Chair candidate, but the Chair is Rebecca Pizor. So what we're doing is adding Teresa Standage, Carla Weber, and Mike Wilson to those that we voted on last time.
We need a motion for that, okay.
It's a, it's an ordinance, and it's the first reading of the ordinance, so you can't appoint them until the second reading?
Got you, got you.
So your, 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 your motion is, or is to approve or disapprove of the amendment to the ordinance?
All right, all right, so we are voting on the amendment to add three additional persons to that Senior Services Advisory Committee.
Mayor, can I make a discussion point, and this is, I guess, to Mr. Hayes, but, so what we're looking at is an ordinance amendment that just adds the number of members. Could we also, I mean, I guess we're looking at section 291A1, could we modify section two to describe the staggered date appointments in the ordinance? Because that's what we're going to end up doing next step, right, you know what I'm saying? So I think the count's in that, you know what I'm saying, the section two, the number two, I think says something about six of the 13, we're going to be this date, and seven of the 13, we're going to be this other date. Could we modify it at the same time as we're doing this, to say eight of them are going, yeah, eight of them are going to be this date, and eight are going to be that date?
To make it 16.
Okay, yeah, if you'd like to, and just include that with a motion, and we'll get it clean.
Okay, so, so let me go ahead and make that motion, if everybody's okay with that, so I make a motion that we pass this, was it ordinance 2019-05, on first reading with the one additional date, I guess it's section 291A2, to make it show 16 full members.
Okay.
All right, okay.
On second.
Okay, we've got a second, motion second, all in favor of that motion, let it be known by the raised hands, and it passes unanimously. All right, now we come to six A.
No, we actually still have to make those appointments, the discs, right?
Next time, next time.
For the 13, we don't have to mess with them?
Well, we'll wait till the ordinance becomes official on second reading, and then we'll.
Then we'll do all 16s, okay.
All right.
Ms. Brown?
Item six A is ordinance number 2019-03, vacating, abandoning, and closing two public rights-of-way, consisting of a portion of Hay Street as it extends between Main Street, State Highway 27, and Jefferson Street, and consisting of approximately 0.5792 acres, and a portion of the public alley located between Hay Street and Quinlan Street, and consisting of approximately 0.726 acres. Said rights-of-way are out of the Charles Shriners Second Edition to the city of Kerrville, a subdivision of Kerr County, Texas, according to the plat recorded in volume K, pages 107 of the deed records of Kerr County, Texas, making a finding that neither the street nor the alley is required for present or future public use, providing for the terms and conditions of vacation, abandonment, and closure, providing for the furnishing of a certified copy of this ordinance for recording in the official public records of Kerr County, Texas, as a quitclaim deed, authorizing the city manager to take all necessary action to effectuate the vacation, abandonment, closure, and quitclaim, and providing for a public hearing. That was that the first one.
Mr. Paxton?
As Ms. Brown mentioned, this is the second reading of the ordinance for the closure of Hay Street. Couple of questions came up at the last hearing regarding the alley towards Francisco Lemos, we have clarified where that ownership line is and where the easement is, there is another individual that owns the portion between HEB and Francisco Lemos with a city easement for the alley in front of that. We have started talking with HEB as far as what improvements they may want to make, and we'll keep working with them as that moves forward, that may come back as a lower item.
But would that mean HEB has a right to use it?
It's a public easement, so, right.
Is, as far as that goes, so, so they can't really close it or give it up or anything like that, but can, as part of the discussion, is, can you put a barrier up so that, my concern is that if it's open, that gas station where it's going to end up being, that's how people are going to go out, and I don't know if we want them to go out, if we do, then.
I think it's one way in, anyway.
It is, but if, if I'm leaving the gas station, and it's right there, I might just be wanting to go.
That's one of the things we'll address with HEB, as far as marking it one way, which direction, and future improvements to that alley.
And it's certainly something that takes, you know, you look at during the plating process, access and easements and things of that nature.
Any other questions?
I thought of something later, which I didn't think of before, you're going to keep the current building open, is that correct? So will that, will there be enough parking still with the construction and all going on with the new, will that affect the parking at all?
Benjamin Scott with HEB, parking will be tight during that, we're looking at an off-site location to pick up another 60 or 70 spots during that time, it will be a difficult period there, but we'll try to do all we can to manage that, and work out things to shuttle our partners back and forth and keep as many spots in the lot open.
Just keeping it open will be good, so we'll try to be patient and.
And we'll try to, I think one of the things we found is very effective during this, is just to communicate as much as we can along the process, so the customers know each upcoming stage of the project, so they know where parking's moving around and those type of things.
Will curbside still be there and open and?
We're hoping to keep it open there.
Maybe you'll move it or something.
So it's right on that edge of where the new store is, so we'll see, but if not, we'll find an accommodation in town.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Here, Council, have any other questions?
I've got a few, Mayor.
Okay.
Just curious, when are we expecting the street to actually be closed, and like, when is, how does that kind of take place? They're reading the second ordinance tonight, does that mean, when is it, when are y'all expecting the street to go away?
We'll file that quitclaim deed, and then the follow-up will be filing the plat, so, Mike, do we have a timeframe on that exactly?
I mean, a couple of weeks, and then it'll be up to HEB as to when they close the street, and.
Our ideal situation would be that we run the plat all the way through, and then we hold to record it till we're ready to start construction, I don't see any reason to close that street until we have to, and construction's starting. It also, it's just something we're open to working out with the city, but we have no reason to close that before we're ready to go.
Have you got an idea of the summer, or after the summer?
Do you know right now what the timing is?
I think it's fall that we're looking to start right now, but there may be some mobilization before then.
The reason, the reason I was asking, I've been kind of working with the Youth Council, you might have heard him mention Hispanic Heritage Festival, we're trying to put together, and I was seeing if y'all, y'all might entertain having like a block party on that strip, kind of like a.
I believe it's something, we'll look with the construction schedule and timing, but it sounds reasonable.
And that, what you're talking about is like a goodbye to Hay Street?
So it'd be something we'd be open to discussing, but I think our goal would be to leave it open as long as possible until construction's ready to start.
Okay, and also, I had someone come by my office today and inform me that the house that fronts on Jefferson, I guess.
411 Jefferson.
It's right next to Earl Daily Times, is an historic church from 1918, are we doing anything to work with them to preserve the building?
We, we actually did, we're giving, and part of the eagerness for us to get closed on the properties, we're giving the owner six months afterwards. We purchase it, they get fully funded, six months to move, relocate that house, I don't know the status of that, but that was their goal originally. If it wasn't a donation to the church, I believe the owner was going to take it down himself and reconstruct in another location. So that was, that was definitely a big part of our discussions.
And then the other one is, just some mentions of the large trees, kind of, I guess in that same area, what, is that something you can work in your plans, or?
We'd like to see what we can, but it is going to be very tight back there, and until we have that final plan, we'll work with staff on what can stay and what can't.
Yes, sir, I understand, all right, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, let's go down the line, Mr. Baridi.
Okay, so, just piggybacking, since you're standing there, I was going to ask, are you allowed to tell us, that, that house at 411 Jefferson, it hasn't been closed yet, I mean, you haven't closed.
We haven't closed the transaction, no, sir.
Okay, and so, and maybe you're the right person to ask these, so the traffic study that we asked about last time, so we got, I guess it's part one in our packet, but a part two that is somewhat important, isn't part of it, because it's, I guess, not complete yet, is that correct?
We've got our traffic engineer here, phase two or part two of this has been completed, I don't think we formally submitted, we're waiting for feedback from everyone, so go back and talk a lot more to that.
Howdy, Council, my name is Barack Torani, traffic engineer for HEB, we did complete part two of the TIA, and it has been submitted to staff, Kerrville, and Tech Dot. The findings of those, of part two, is that the level of service of all the intersections that we were required to analyze are operating well within the bounds of acceptable operations, which is A or B, so we didn't find any issues. One of the intersections had some minor operational issues that just with simple pavement marking modifications brings it up to snuff.
Okay, so, so along those lines, and let me just ask kind of quick questions, because they got me on a clock, right, so, and your answers are part of it. So, basically, the part one and part two did not look at the traffic impact to overflow at Francisco Lemos and Shriner, or Hayes and Shriner, is that correct?
That is, no, 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 we did evaluate that, when we redistributed the traffic from the existing condition to the future condition, where the, the intersection no longer allows northbound or southbound. We did reallocate that traffic that would have otherwise used that roadway to other intersections, and when we did the operational analysis, the operational analysis did take into account the redistribution of cars.
In section, in part one, it didn't.
Yes, it did.
No, it looked at Jefferson and Hayes, not Shriner and Hayes.
Shriner, Shriner, the intersection of Shriner was not one that city staff nor Tech Dot asked us to evaluate.
So that was my question, and so, and part of the conclusion in that traffic study was to suggest on northbound, that people were going to go down to Water Street, and go over, and then come back up, which, I'm here to tell you, if I'm driving down Main, I'm not going to go down to Water Street in order to go north. So that was my problem, as I was asking last meeting, and it was a problem, it was one of the problems actually Ms. Bond was talking about, is that the study itself didn't focus on the danger spots that we are going to have after this has been done. So it, it studied the impact to HEBs in and out, but it didn't impact, it didn't show where that necessary traffic's going to flow, and so, to me, that's kind of the reason I didn't feel comfortable, and I still don't, because we don't see part two voting for this without, in my mind, all the complete information, I, I understand you submitted it, but we don't have a, we don't have it, and Tech Dot hasn't, I guess, responded, I assume maybe staff has here, but that, that's kind of the problem to a traffic impact study, that doesn't actually test out where it's going to actually impact us, because what I'm looking for is ultimately, what are we going to, the city is going to have to deal with that impact after the fact, are we not, I mean, HEB's not signing up to deal with that, right?
To go back to the, the study itself, the study was completed based upon the parameters that the state and the city provided to us, and those intersections were the intersections that we analyzed, and we did reallocate that traffic at those intersections to the adjacent intersections, and they were part of our operational analysis. So what we have found within those adjacent intersections that are city intersections, not just HEB driveways, is that with the reallocation of traffic, those city intersections operate at an acceptable level of service.
Right, so, I mean, you understand my point, though, you, you did what you were tasked with doing, I get that, I'm suggesting to you that you were probably undertasked. We're going to have an impact, as she was pointing out, and we've also pointed out, that we're going to go, it's kind of like an unfunded mandate, this city is going to end up having to pick up that tab for that. So, that, that's really, I just wanted to make sure everybody understood that's what we're. So that, that's really, I just wanted to make sure everybody understood that that's what we're doing.
I don't see a tab in the future.
Let's go down the line. Uh, you do this in a lot of places for HEB. If Tech Dot or the city sees a problem beyond the immediate property, do they ask you to look at that as well?
Yes, yes, we've done this, uh, I've personally done this for HEB in all towns all over, all over Texas. The last one we just did was Marble Falls, very similar situation with an existing store, very similar layout with adding a new signal to the front door for the, the HEB driveway. Um, you know, that's why we get together with them prior to me moving forward with the actual study is to understand where are the hotspots? What are we envisioning traffic going, where do we need to analyze? And that's what's analyzed then. And here in Curville, you know, the intersection of Main Street and Francisco Lemos or Main Street and Quinlan or Jefferson, uh, and Hayes, Jefferson and Francisco Lemos, those are your, those are your critical intersections. And as you, as you get further away from that core, if you will, traffic disperses and traffic, the traffic volumes just get lower and lower. So if, if it can be said that what has been analyzed and what has been found, if the traffic at those core intersections, those intersections that, that take a lot of the demand in the system are operating at acceptable level of service, especially As and Bs, then it can be said that as you get further away from that core, as traffic disperses, those intersections are going to be operating acceptable levels of service as well.
Okay, and so what, what I'm assuming is that had the city or Tech Dot anticipated problems beyond that immediate area, they would have asked you to do studies of that?
I believe so, yes.
Okay, all right.
Can I, can I ask one question?
Uh, let's go, but, let's, Ms. Eichner.
Now, I don't think I have any questions. I found the, uh, numbers of cars interesting as, uh, as you, as those were, as the evaluation was done. And, um, um, didn't realize some of them had quite as many as they do, so.
Yeah.
Appreciate the information and, and the study and, uh-
I'm curious just exactly how you do it. Do you have an electronic device or do you stand out and have a tablet? I'm sure you don't.
They did a long time ago, but these days, uh, our, our data collection consultants will go out and install very, very small cameras in intersections. They record the data, uh, over the period of time that we ask them to. In a typical study such as this, they'll do the AM peak hour, which is seven to nine, PM peak hour, four to six. And they'll take that back into their, uh, offices and somebody will be counting those cars, uh, and it is QA'd and, and that's the data that's provided to me. Then we take that and we kind of do our engineering and put it into our, uh, we have software that does our operational modeling for us and, um, that's, that's how it's done.
It's all a matter of record as well because it's electronic and can be stored and retrieved at any time and-
Correct.
Okay, before we get to public speakers, briefly, Mr. Baridi, you had another question?
Yeah, all I'm saying is, uh, asking if you, if you had actually read the study because part of what I was asking him was they did real, the big intersection is Hayes and Main, right? And what they reallocated those turns, if you make a turn north on Hayes, they're assuming, they, they studied it as being, instead of doing that, you're now going to go to Water Street, you're going to go south to Water, go right or left. That's just not what people use Hayes for.
Yeah. Um, all right, do we have speakers to this item, Ms. Brown?
Um, Michael Louise Bond.
Hello, mayor and council. Can you hear me all right?
Yes.
My name is Michael Louise Bond. My nickname is Bunny. I live at two one three Stephanie in Curville. I'm here today to speak in opposition to the closure of the three hundred block of Hayes Street for the second time. Thank you for your time and attention to my comments on January the eighth. I both admired and appreciated the questions asked by the members of the city council after my statement that evening, even though I do not agree with the vote on the first reading for the ordinance. So today I'm here appealing to city council to reconsider your preliminary vote to abandon that right of way. I recognize that the HEB Corporation has now provided a detailed traffic study, part one of two, that involved the city staff in the fall of twenty eighteen. My reasons for the opposition to closing Hayes Street remain the same with the addition of two insights. I have learned that residents use Hayes Street as a north-south conveyor street like Sydney Baker and as an alternative to driving on Sydney Baker. And these comments came from the mayor's Facebook page. I still do not see any information with the total number of parking spaces planned. The only comment is that there will be an additional two hundred parking spaces added. The number of pump islands is currently three, which is a total of six VFPs, which I learned meant vehicle, um, fueling positions. I understand that the number of pump islands will increase to a total of ten, which I calculated to be a total of twenty vehicle fueling positions. But the chart shows sixteen. In my opinion, the two changes to the HEB site, these two changes will increase the traffic loads on Main and Jefferson beyond the figures in the traffic study and potentially create hazards in navigating those two major east-west streets. Added to the problems for the Jefferson Street are that the drive-through pharmacy configuration looks to be only one lane and the eighteen-wheelers trying to back into the loading dock off of Jefferson Street. And both of those would be using the same driveway or the same access driveway. To me, this constitutes a hazard on Jefferson Street. Right now, there are times when cars on Jefferson Street wait patiently while an eighteen-wheeler backs into the loading dock. I remain concerned that the closure of Hayes Street is ill-advised as the decision begins to isolate a neighborhood, further isolate a neighborhood which has experienced some isolation for decades. And I understand that the Curville twenty fifty plan recommends that these streets should not be, that streets should not be closed. Economic growth is good for our community, but I believe that there are options for HEB. As I suggested on the eighth, flip the gas pumps to the east side of Hayes, leave Hayes open. I think that HEB South is a prime location for a much larger store. Many residents at both ends of the county, both the east end and the west end, want an HEB. And the Main Street location can remain as a neighborhood grocery store. My responsibility as a citizen is to bring my concerns to elected officials who make the decisions for the future of this community. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We have any other speakers?
Yes, sir, Rob Ervin.
My name is Rob Ervin. I live at twenty-one twenty-eight Bluff Ridge. I have been a resident of Curville for twenty-two years now. Um, obviously in this, this time period, I've seen our city grow quite a bit. Um, I, as a real estate broker, I have been involved in, you know, a, a good portion of, of what has gone on, which is pretty exciting. Certainly if you look at, at the size of the store that is in there right now, um, you know, it is way too crowded and, and the Butt family clearly is interested in having HEB, uh, number one, a showplace. And, and, you know, I am solidly in favor of that. Speaking to, uh, the Jefferson Street, uh, property, I do represent the, uh, the owner of that property. And, um, he is, is, is working with the Presbyterian Church, um, and has offered the house to them. There is interest, you know, trying to figure out logistics on, on how they would move the, that home and, and exactly where they would place it. Um, if, if that is not possible, he is definitely going to be taking that home with him. Um, it has been a family home, uh, since nineteen forty-six, got lots of memories there with his grandparents. Um, and, and he will relocate it. Thank you.
Thank you.
So, okay, then, uh-
Mayor, I'd make a motion that we table this second reading until we, um, hit the traffic study back uh, for the simple reason that it seems a little, uh, premature to do a street closure without the traffic impact study be, coming back from the necessary parties, which I guess means Tech Dot.
Okay, we got a motion. Do we have a second?
I guess what's the harm in tabling? Is this going to hurt HEB at all or any? What's the, I mean, you're not planning to close the street till fall or somewhere around that time. What's the harm in?
What it does is, I, I mean, I believe the second phase has done, we believe it's a cleaning report there, uh, if staff would like to kind of, what it does is push all the timelines back. We've still got to come back for plating later. We've got a six-month holdover with the tenant for the relocation of the house. We just keep pushing that timeline back on the store.
But it, it, based on the timeline and what you just said, it's completed and Tech Dot has it, right? Or no? Yeah, and generally speaking, how long do they take to turn, turn them around? And when do, when, I mean, staff may have seen it, but see, we're actually having to vote on something without seeing it, right? So that's-
But the primary, the part one we have.
Correct.
And the answers he's had, we have tonight.
If you read part one, it leaves out the impact of those others, uh, thing. Part two has that, so.
So Tech Dot and the city did receive it at the same time, uh, generally speaking, Tech Dot, you know, they're always a moving target, so depending on their workload, it could be four to six weeks before they provide, uh, feedback. I mean, obviously we would push to, to, to speed that up, uh, as, as fast as they can get to it and, and provide feedback so we can keep moving forward. Um, but we haven't gotten any indication from Tech Dot or the city that, that they're not satisfied with what we've provided thus far.
And we are working, staff is working with Tech Dot. We want to make sure that that's a coordinated response back to the developer. And I want to get back to your question earlier about the mitigation of the traffic, uh, in, any impacts that are found within the traffic impact analysis. The reality is that the developer does have to mitigate any impacts that are found. And so if those are elements that, as they're being reviewed and as that coordinated response is, is presented back to the developer and, and we can test, uh, the impact, uh, that are there, uh, or any further elements that are, uh, evaluated, that impact does have to be mitigated. So that will, that will be an element that will be required.
Well, that's helpful, but I guess the motion's still there because like you say, it's nothing against the project, it's just I, I have trouble voting on something that I haven't seen the data for.
Our, our ask would be that we are on the hook for anything that comes up in that and that we'll have to make those adjustments if necessary at the other intersections.
I mean, there's, we have a motion.
Motion, we have a motion.
Yeah, we got a motion and a second, uh, to table this. All in favor, let it be known by the raised hand?
Did we get a second? Did you second it?
Did you second it, Vincent?
No.
No, he didn't. Okay, so it's-
It's a lack of a second. Okay, um, I'm going to say we move ahead with this. And, um, with the understanding that, that the, the study that is, has just been done and is with Tech Dot and the city, if there are significant issues, we're going to know about that and it's going to be on you to deal with those, with those issues.
Please request to still get to part two of that.
Oh, yeah.
It's just a work in progress right now.
But we'll get it as soon as it's available, okay?
The staff has it, right?
Okay, do you have a motion in regard to this item?
I move that we adopt ordinance number twenty nineteen oh three.
I'll second it.
Okay. All in favor, let it be known by the raised hand? Okay, so, and opposed by the same sign, it is four one. All right, now, um, let's go to six B, Ms. Brown.
Ordinance number twenty nineteen dash oh two, amending the city zoning code by changing the zoning district for an approximately six point seven nine zero acres consisting of lots one and two, HEB addition and portions of lots three hundred through three oh two and lot three forty-eight through three forty-nine, block forty-eight of the Shriner Second Edition, both subdivisions within the city of Curville, Kirk County, Texas, and more commonly known as the property located at three hundred Main Street, State Highway twenty-seven, by removing the property from the eleven C zoning district and placing it within the Central Business, Business Zoning District, CBD, containing a cumulative clause containing a savings and severability clause, providing for a maximum penalty or fine of two thousand dollars, ordering publication and providing other matters relating to the subject.
Okay, Mr. Paxton?
Thank you, mayor. As Ms. Brown mentioned, this is the second reading of the zone case to take the rest of this property from eleven C to the Central Business District as part of the Curville twenty fifty plan to encourage reinvestment in downtown and the HEB project that they're reinvesting in. We'd be pleased to answer any questions.
All right, um, any questions of Mr. Paxton? And I'm going to start over here with Ms. Segerman.
No, I've asked many before and I think I'm satisfied, so.
Okay, Ms. Eichner?
I'm fine. I'm still lurking, learning about all the, the different names for all the different traffic corridors. So, uh, that was, uh, good to have that. Appreciated that information.
Okay, Mr. Baridi, okay, no, all right, um, all in-
I'd make a motion that we-
Let's get a motion.
I'd make a motion that we pass ordinance twenty nineteen dash oh two on second reading.
Okay, and you have a second? You have a second, Ms. Eichner? All right, all in favor of this, let it be known by the raised hand? Okay, and it passes unanimously. Okay, we come to six C, Brown?
Ordinance number twenty nineteen dash zero one, creating a planned development district for professional office, retail trade one and warehousing and distribution uses on an approximately four point two seven acre tract of land out of the Patrick Fleming survey, number six six six, abstract number one forty-five, within the city of Curville, Kirk County, Texas, more commonly known as three eighteen Leslie Drive, adopting a concept plan and conditions related to the development of said district containing a cumulative clause containing a savings and severability clause, establishing a penalty or fine not to exceed two thousand dollars for each day of violation or any provision hereof, ordering publication and providing other matters relating to the subject.
Okay.
Thank you, mayor. This is second reading of the planned district development on Leslie Drive. And the request is for a planned district development again for the distribution warehouse and office warehouse as on the concept plan. Since first reading, we had a few discussions amongst the staff and the applicant regarding the paving and the, basically the back lot of the warehouse and distribution area. They have agreed to pave that. The original concept plan noted that it would be a Kalachi. So updated the site plan, the concept plan to indicate that. And then there was some other, other discussion of the recommended plant list. And that plant list is published by both AgriLife Extension and Public Works Department, recommended plants. Uh, it's roughly eight pages of different types of trees, shrubs, plants, ornamental grasses and any kind of lawn grasses. So any of their planting areas, they've agreed to follow those native, uh, plant types as part of their project.
We've adopted or is that something we haven't adopted yet?
I don't believe there's any formal adoption that I'm aware of, uh, but it is published through the Public Works Department and the AgriLife Extension Office.
Something to do in the future. I mean, it's been on a lot of PDs going forward and I just tried to find it this time.
Right, currently it's not compulsory, it's voluntary unless they, you know, upfront agreed to, to it as part of a planned district. Uh, but it is something that the co-review committee will be looking at, um, and whether it's just guidelines or it's requirements, that's, you know, yet to be seen.
That was kind of my issue last time is we say it shall be and we have twenty fifty plan, we did all these recommended and guideline things. We'll have a recommended list here, but we're saying you shall do this, so that, in my opinion, is you have to plant these plants. But after looking at the list, there's over, I don't know, eighty or a hundred plants that you can plant, so.
It's fairly comprehensive.
Makes me a little bit more comfortable about it.
Okay, do we have other questions, uh, Mr. Paxton?
Got a few more that I've already kind of addressed with Drew, but I'll do it publicly. Um, there was a parking area and on the plat, there were on the map, it had Kalachi. And I think we've addressed that. I don't know what we changed that to, but-
It'd be paved with asphalt.
Okay, it pays with asphalt, um, and then there's that circle in that same area, but I think you already addressed that. That's just a turnaround circle.
Correct.
And then, uh, have we had any answers to kind of the letter we've received? Were you going to get to that later? From the neighboring property to the north?
Yes, uh, answered some of those questions with- Yes. Uh, answered some of those questions with Ms. Olden. Um, they are looking to install sidewalks. Uh, they're still working with Public Works on the, I don't believe curb and gutter will be installed since it's existing pavement. Uh, there is an access point for phase two off of Easy Street and through that construction, they'll have to coordinate and keep Easy Street open to traffic, uh, particularly since it's a dead end street. Can't block access to and from Easy Street and the adjacent property owners. Um, Ms. Olden had a. I'm sorry. Sorry. Uh, they, they are looking to install sidewalks along both Easy Street and Leslie Drive. Uh, there will be access on phase two to Easy Street, which they will have, have to leave access to Easy Street open throughout construction on both phase one and phase two. Uh, I believe there's a question on the timeframe of construction. Uh, Mr. Mundergon is here. He's agreed, sent the first reading that the first phase would be approximately six months of construction and roll right into phase two, uh, once they start construction, um, after, of course, the zone case and platting and building permitting.
And, uh, I saw a tune that I was kinda interested in is maybe she's interested in changing her zoning and also the screening that will be required.
Because it is a residential use, they will be required screening along the property line between the two use, the two properties. And any adjacent property owner or any property owner would be allowed to apply for any kind of zone district that they're looking for. Um, of course, going into recommendation from comprehensive plan and, uh, the new zoning codes that comes out later on this year.
That screening, I believe, your, my request, like an eight-foot fence is our ordinance?
Privacy fence, yeah.
Yes.
It's eight or six?
Well, it says eight.
It's eight for their line.
Mr. Broody? I'm sorry. Anything else, Mr. Paxton?
Hope I answered or got some of your answers or questions answered.
All right. Mr. Broody?
But to the screening, they actually are gonna need to put screening on two sides of their property, are they not?
Yeah, yes, to the.
Not the street sides, but the other two.
Right. To the west is also a single family.
Yeah. Um, so the sidewalks that you mentioned, um, you say they're looking to, is, are we requiring them? Are they, are they, okay.
They're required.
So we're gonna have sidewalks on their side of Leslie Drive and their side of Easy?
That's correct.
And, um, this is one that's, it's similar to bringing up a, a road closure without the traffic study, but the agenda bill is a little bit problematic, um, for, for this. It was in the first reading. But, so, short answer questions. How many neighboring property owners spoke at P&amp;Z? It says many. How many spoke at P&amp;Z?
I believe we had three speak at P&amp;Z.
Yeah, so it was two property owners and three people. How many of those property owners actually spoke in support?
Two.
None. They didn't speak in support. They just didn't say they didn't like it. They all raised concerns. Um, there was only two property owners. Um, and then to clarify, we got proposal, I, I did this last time, but it's, it's still relevant. The proposed land use does not meet Kerrville 2050. Proposed land use does not meet Comp Plan 2002. Proposed land use does not meet the current Gateway zoning district. Installing PDs is a frowned upon tactic. So based on these facts, which haven't changed since P&amp;Z, staff previously recommended denial for this in the agenda bill and, and now they, you know, were recommending approval. So what facts changed or were you directed to change the recommendation from denial to approval?
But Mr. Broody, you asked that same question at the last meeting. And I thought you answered it quite eloquent, eloquently yourself, Drew, so if you would like to repeat that again.
I didn't ask the last question. The rest of it was lead-up statements.
The rest of the question regarding the PDD.
I, I just basically asked what facts changed between P&amp;Z or were you directed to change this, uh, recommendation? Cause we don't have that information.
The written recommendation was following policy, but as P&amp;Z and as city council both asked for professional opinion, this case makes sense in this location, given the surroundings. The surroundings itself do not meet the cur, current comprehensive plan, except for a few single-family homes. Most of the new development in that area has developed under the Gateway zoning district, which also did not meet the comprehensive plan when it was put in place. So between the adoption of Kerrville 2050 and the recommendation to rewrite the zoning code, this case has come in during that gap. So we do not have a clean, black and white answer to our adopted codes. The PD is the best solution to make that fit following the comprehensive plan adoption and the rewrite of the zoning code and the zoning map.
So basically, we do, we do PDs in order to get around our master plan?
No, we do PDs to fill the gap between the comprehensive plan that council adopted and the zoning code that is under, underway for the rewrite for council's review later on this year.
Comprehensive plan shows it is res, is own neighborhood residential.
The comprehensive 2050 plan did not specifically look at this location. 2050 plan focused on the strategic catalyst areas, which this is not a part of.
But this area fell under what was called.
From the 2002 plan. That's correct.
It's what we printed in the map for 2050.
That is correct.
Okay, then you've answered that. So we're just, we're working around the plans that we have. That's my point. Thank you.
If I can comment, so with regard to future land use as part of your comprehensive plan, it's not uncommon for cities with, given it's a 30-year plan and given that, you know, when you look at specific cases, it might be appropriate to amend your plan whenever you're doing zoning. So this oftentimes happens that cities will amend their future land use plan at the same time that they approve zoning because the circumstances warrant. And so this is one of those that is, falls into that category. And again, this is, this is customary practice for cities to do.
All right. Uh, Ms. Seigerman?
Uh, I was just, and I know, I'm sure we talked about this and I didn't find it, maybe I missed it. What will the outside of this building look like? Uh, material?
Mr. Mundergon, would you like to answer that?
Uh, good afternoon, council, mayor. Uh, the outside of the building is a tiltwell building, so it's gonna look very similar to what this building looks like. You have all masonry all the way around, uh, with a winds coat of rock at the bottom.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Ms. Seigerman?
I, I guess I would just like to ask Mrs. Olden and her son, are you, did you have any questions that we didn't cover from? They filled out a speaker request form. Okay, even better.
I hear it, I guess. Uh, yeah. My name is Mary Olden. I'm a forty-nine, forty-eight and a half year resident of Kerrville. Live at 2016 Easy Street. And I thank you for listening to me tonight. Uh, you've, you've received my letter and all of my questions, so I, I know you, and you've tried to address them and I appreciate that, which is having, again, a difficult time hearing. Um, I understand that the, uh, construction for the first phase is going to be about six months. Do we know how long this construction of the second phase is gonna be?
Not at this moment.
Not at this moment. Is construction going to occur during the day? Are we gonna have some nighttime work?
Only during the day.
Okay, cause we had to put up with lows and that was a horror. Um, let me see, of course, the, the, it's, the, the screening is the biggest, my biggest concern because I haven't been a resident up there for so long. I don't know where I would wanna go. If, if there's anyplace else I'd wanna go at this point in time. Uh, but I do want my privacy and I, I do enjoy, uh, it up there and having the privacy that I do have. So if there's going to be fencing, when you talk about screening, what type of screening are we talking about? I'm sorry?
Mr. Paxton?
I'm sorry.
That'd be an eight-foot wood or masonry fence would be the requirement.
Wood or masonry. And that is required by ordinance?
Yes.
And I'm Matt Olden, her son. I've also been here forty-eight and a half years. Uh, very much pro-business. Uh, I welcome you as a neighbor and I appreciate y'all coming in. You know, as long as you're doing it right, that's fine by me and we appreciate you.
And we don't have any objections to all of this.
No, we're, we're all for you, so. And we'd like to meet you sometime, so appreciate it. Welcome to Kerrville.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Uh.
I move that.
Okay, you got a motion?
Yes, I move that we adopt ordinance number 2019 dash oh one to create a planned development district, uh, for this warehouse and distribution use.
Yeah, okay. All right, we have a second? Got a second from Ms. Seigerman. Uh, all in favor of the motion, let it be known by the raised hand. And it passes five oh.
Thank you.
Okay, moving to seven A. Ms. Brown?
Seven A is award bid to J3 for the $285,000 for removal of damaged aerial pipe bridge located along Guadalupe Street near Loop 534.
Okay, Mr. Hoppy?
Good evening, mayor and council. This is PowerPoint comes up. Uh, here we go. So, uh, we reported, uh, to this group in the early, uh, part of November regarding, uh, damage that occurred to the aerial pipe bridge located near Loop 534, uh, from the regional flooding event that occurred mid-October. You can see that flood event here. Essentially, uh, this, uh, proposal, uh, is, this contract is separated into two parts. Uh, the base proposal is for, uh, the elements of infrastructure that are located essentially up in the air, above the water. Uh, we broke that out, uh, specifically from, uh, the alternate, uh, proposal piece, which are the elements that are in the water, which are a little bit more complicated, uh, we anticipate being more complicated to, uh, remove. And so we just wanted to see what the, uh, kind of the difference was in those two pieces. Uh, and so we have, uh, received a qualified, uh, proposal from J3 Company, uh, both for, uh, the base proposal as well as the alternate proposal. Uh, what we intend to do, what our recommendation would be, would be to, uh, go ahead and award the contract to J3 Company for the full, uh, base proposal as well as the alternate proposal. Uh, and then we are going to, uh, evaluate the methods by which J3 Company is proposing, uh, for, uh, the removal of the elements that are more complicated within the water piece. Uh, and we're gonna see if there's some opportunities for some cost savings there.
Okay. That's the low bid. You, you got a good word on this company?
This is, again, this was a competitive seal proposal. Uh, so these were proposals that were sent. Uh, this was the lowest cost that was, uh, submitted, but, uh, there were also other elements to, uh, their proposal, uh, that we evaluated. This is a local firm. Uh, we've got a good history with them. So overall, we felt like their, uh, proposal was not only the lowest contract amount, but also a very qualified, uh, solid proposal.
Okay, all right. Okay, Ms. Seigerman?
Uh, I, I think time is of the essence to get these pipes out of the water so we can finish the investigation before anything else happens and the weather that could change where they are currently. So I, and I agree with, I support your findings on the J3, uh, bid, so I have no questions.
Ms. Seigerman?
Mine would, has to do with time. Do you have an, an idea of time?
So, uh, within the proposal documents, we've asked for them to have the elements that are in the base proposal, uh, to be removed within the next month because, uh, as you said, time is of the essence and we wanna make sure, uh, that we get that out of there as soon as possible for safety reasons. We understand that the other elements that are under the water are a little bit more complicated and so we want those out, uh, as quickly as well. Uh, but there's some other elements that we need to, uh, be mindful of. So that, it may be a little bit longer timeframe on that.
Thank you.
My question regarding time. Mr. Broody?
I'd clarify if I just heard you right. So what we're awarding tonight is really just the base? We're not, we're not making a decision on the alternate or are we?
No, sir. What we would recommend is to award, uh, the base proposal as well as the alternate proposal. And staff will work with J3 Company to fully evaluate what all the methods and means that they are recommending for the alternate proposal. We may have some pieces that allow for some cost savings within there, uh, depending on what we agree to as far as the, the means and methods.
Okay. That's all I got.
Mr. Mundergon?
Yes, sir. Uh, what is the balance in the reuse distribution project budget? I couldn't find that in our budget.
I don't have that balance off the top of my head. We are northward of what we, uh, had, uh, presented to council back in the October, November timeframe. So we are north of the 1.2 million overall savings. I don't have the exact figure for you, though. I know we're north of that.
If you can get me that sometime, I'd, I'd like to see that.
Sure.
Also, what have we done with the materials once we remove them? Is J3 keeping those? Do we have a use for them? What's the?
Yes, so part of this, uh, within, uh, what we submitted within the RFQ, uh, is that the, uh, these will be removed, uh, and, and stored for forensic analysis.
Okay. And again, I, I've, we've done a lot of work with J3. I think they're a great company.
Yes, sir. Yes, so, uh, we intend for, uh, again, you, you spoke to project savings. So, uh, we are funding this removal element, uh, via savings and project, uh, funding overall. Uh, we intend to reimburse that, uh, through, uh, some means, um, and methods. Uh, we're evaluating, as we've, uh, presented to this group before, several parallel tracks. Uh, it could be grant funding. We have submitted the, the PIF applications to Texas Water Development Board, maybe insurance, et cetera. So we've got, uh, parallel paths for reimbursing the fund, uh, at that time. But we, we would recommend going ahead and using the project fund at this time so we can get it out in an expeditious manner.
Okay, do we have a motion?
I'd make a motion that we approve, award the contract.
I'm sorry, I've, I've got some speakers. Uh, Bill Morgan?
Okay.
Bill Morgan, 1744 Glen Road. My concern is the citizens paid for this thing less than a year ago and it's already gone down. Where is the, uh, why, why is not the contractor or the designer liable for this? Why do the citizens have to pay for it again? That's my question and I haven't heard an answer to that.
Hey, um, Mr. McDaniel?
Yeah, I, EA just commented that's, we're working on parallel paths to make that happen and there's multiple, um, efforts by our outside legal counsel, uh, to pursue, uh, just that, either through insurance or settlement or, and/or grants. So, uh, but in the meantime, we gotta get this out of the water so that we can further do our forensic investigation on materials and construction as part of that investigation, uh, for who's gonna end up paying for this in the end.
I don't see any grounds for a grant on that, though. It ought to be a corresponding liability between the contractor and the designer.
Well, once we figure that out through our forensics, you know, we'll be pursuing that as well. But as a, as a fallback, not just for removal of the, the debris now, but also, uh, constructing what the fix will be long-term. Uh, and so that's where more of the grant funding comes into play.
Oh, okay. Thank you.
Basically, none of, none of the, the ultimate cost has been determined yet, but we gotta get the stuff out of the water.
Yeah, yeah. Brown, do we have other speakers?
Yes, sir. Peggy McKay?
Okay. No, uh, Ms. McKay says no.
Oh, okay. That's all I've got.
Well, I'll make a motion.
Mr. Broody made a motion. Do we have a second?
I second.
Okay, Ms. Seigerman. Um, all in favor of passing, uh, this item, if you'd let it be known by the raised hand? It passes unanimously. Okay. Um, now, financial update. Ms. Dozier?
Good evening, mayor and council. I'd like to give you a brief financial update for the month ended December 31st. Like to start with the general fund, our largest fund. So year-to-date through December 31st, the general fund has recorded revenue of 7.3 million and expenses of 6.8 million. A few highlights on the revenue side. Um, right now, when you look at this graph, it looks like we're, um, under, um, performing on our property tax collection compared to the prior year and compared to budget. Um, there are a couple of things at play here. So it looks like we have more people wanting to pay in January this year compared to last year because of the tax law change in 2018. We had a surge of payments in, um, December 2017 that we're not seeing repeat this year. Um, we also had, there, there's some large electronic payers, um, that, um, that pay property taxes directly to the county and, um, one of their largest payers paid in December last year, but January this year. So I can tell you that, um, through, um, through today in January, we're, we're making it up. So I don't have a concern about revenues overall. It appears to just be a timing difference between the months. Um, and as far as sales tax goes, our next largest revenue source, um, December sales tax is up over 17% compared to the prior year, but there's some kind of unusual items at play there. So we had a large prepayment and we had a, a large prior period payment. So when you adjust for that one-time activity, sales tax was still up 5.6. So when you adjust for that one-time activity, sales tax was still up five point six percent. So that's a very healthy number, led by increases in food services, construction, and retail. On the general fund expenditure side, we're tracking close to budget. Moving on to the water fund, year-to-date there, we've received revenues of two point seven million compared to expenditures of three million. Notable activity is primarily on the revenue side. We continue to, to be under budget for the year and significantly lower than the prior year due to the record rainfall that we've had this fall.
That's with the rate increase?
Yes, sir. It is. Yes, so we've had a rate increase, but our consumption is down significantly. On the expenditure side, we are, let's see, on the expenditure side, we are lower than last year because of a two-hundred-and-seventy-two-thousand-dollar transfer for the Legion Left Capital Project that occurred last year and did not recur this year. Looking at our other funds, on the Development Services Fund, so you'll remember that this is a new fund that we've broken out separately this year, used to be in the general fund. For presentation purposes, we're pulling last year's activity out of the general fund and showing it here. So year-to-date, we have revenues of two-hundred-and-eighty-eight-thousand compared to expenditures of five-hundred-and-eighty-six-thousand. The big expenditure there is a transfer of three-hundred-and-seventy-nine-thousand to our capital projects fund, and that's for the code rewrite and development services software projects that we have going on currently. And then we have the golf fund that's received revenues of a hundred-and-sixty-nine-thousand compared to expenditures of two-hundred-and-twenty-three-thousand. They've also been hit hard by the weather this fall and have lost a significant number of, of playing days. The Hotel Occupancy Fund remains close to budget, revenues of three-hundred-and-three-thousand and expenditures of three-hundred-and-twenty-two-thousand. Just looking at the month of December, it was up six point four percent compared to the prior year, so real healthy month of December. And I'd be happy to answer any questions. All right, thank you very much.
Can I ask just one? So the last slide you had up there, it talked about development services and the one-time, whatever it was, code review?
Yes, sir.
Okay. So we have a balanced budget, so that sets us negative. Is it going to catch itself up later in the year, or what, what are we expecting to make it catch up?
Yes, sir. So a couple of things, let me go back to that slide. Okay, so on that slide, you'll see that the Development Services Fund gets revenues from permits and fee revenue and also from a transfer in. That transfer in's primarily from the general fund and a little bit from the water fund as well. So the transfer in is at one-twelfth each month. So that is going to occur over the course of the year, but the project transfer was made in one lump sum. All right, thank you very much.
Thank you.
We've already had the Curville Youth Advisory Council, and Mr. Vocal would like to talk about the possible music festival.
Yes, sir. I've been working on this for a little over a year now, and after finishing a comprehensive plan, I've noticed that it's been in there in a couple of areas. On page three sixteen, you've got D four point two, which kind of falls under park programming, D four point three downtown events to attract public and visitors, and D four point four, regular live music. We also had a discussion of River Fest in some of our budget meetings, and that is on page one thirty-seven in the twenty-nineteen budget book. My idea would be a large half-day event, kind of to start, and with a variety of bands, closing with a big headliner. Two stages, multiple events such as a silent disco, zip line, mechanical bull, Ferris wheel, water slides, an actual destination where you're not just there for the music. It's an actual, something that's going to draw people in. Also, multiple vendors, and of course, I'm going to mention food trucks again. I think local businesses are going to benefit. Downtown would definitely benefit. Hotels, motels, campsites would benefit. It's also a way to brand and promote Curville. I've kind of ran this by the Curville Youth Council, and they seem to be pretty excited about it as far as creating a brand, like a logo. We've kind of, a name that's come up is Rhythm, Rhythm on the River. Curville's Rhythm on the River would be something. And also, they might be wanting to help try to find sponsorships. I've been talking with a company out of Austin called EPS. It's Event Production Services. They have a lot of experience with working with cities to create these events, spoken with many people in our community that support an event like this. Again, as I spoke with the youth council, they seemed very supportive. I've also been looking into funding sources and understand there's a possibility of working with the state. Also, some local businesses have shown some interest in sponsorships, and I'm bringing this up here to, tonight to hopefully council will consider moving forward with this. Maybe we can get something done by the end of the year or plan for next year.
What would be, what would be the next step?
I would like to work with EPS. They kind of said that they need a six-to-nine-month window in planning an operation like this, and once we open that door, they kind of, we kind of tell them what our ideas of what we want and we find out how we get there.
Okay, all right.
They seem to be kind of a turnkey operation also.
Exactly. Who are they?
It's just, they do the New Year's event in Austin. They help with ACL. There's a big festival in Carrollton that they do, and a couple other smaller ones. And they do Blues on the Green in Austin. That's like a five-program summer event that has, they don't like to say this, but they draw over thirty thousand people as a part. They don't want.
And, and how do they charge?
Those are all free events. Based off sponsorship.
The company is paid money, but the events are not ticketed, if that, I don't know what you were asking.
I would say, I would say check them and come back to us.
I have a question.
Check with them, go ahead.
You know, I think we still have the Fourth of July party, so I was curious about the timing of your idea. I think it's a great idea, by the way.
Yeah, I don't, I don't want to take anything away from that. I don't want to be.
That's why I was asking.
Something totally separate.
Well, it would hurt both of you probably if you tried to, so, you know, you'd maybe make it a fall kind of event, maybe, or something like that, or?
That's, that's something we, we, that's something we'll discuss. If we'd like to have a workshop or how we want to do this, I just bring it up trying to get us to going down that road.
So you would bring them here to talk to us? Give us some ideas?
Mayor, if I could comment? So I've, I've been looking at this with the councilman for, what, seven months, eight months now, nine months? And I've talked to the promoter. I've looked at their budget. I looked at the cost. You all approved in this year's budget a new position to help with these kinds of events. So Ashley and her group are now planning on events similar to this in the fall. And so we're already working on this. And whether or not it's, you know, the full scope of what the councilman's talking about this year or, or the following year, I agree, it's also a great idea, but there's lots of moving parts to this. There's lots of money that had to be, would have to be raised. There could be a subsidy from the city, and all those are questions that are budget questions and lots of coordination and effort. So I just say that to, to mention that we're already working on a similar event.
Can I come in? If, if I say something that's not in the vision of what you're talking about, just stop me. But, but basically, the difference between what currently the city is going to present in the summer and what he's talking about is what he began with, which is, is the event styled like what he's talking about is, is truly a destination event. It's, it's aimed at branding Curville with this. What I read from the press release and what little I know about what the parks is trying to do, that's more aimed, at least initially, at local Curville, which is great. We need that, too. I don't see these as competing as much as, they actually go hand-in-hand because they, they both make full use of what everybody wants us to do, which is put events on the river. And the, this company that he's been talking with, they'd be aiming this as not some one-year event or a couple-year, you're ideally trying to build up to something, you know, you can only hope, but Curville Folk Festival is an example of something that people know about worldwide. Well, we're not trying to go worldwide here, I wouldn't imagine, but you could peel off, depending on your calendar, people that go to see music in Austin, you might get some here, you might get some from San Antonio. It's, it's more like that. And as far as the funding for it, I've been talking with him and I feel like the event needs to be more of a privately created, and then when it gets down to gap financing and there's an ask involved, then the city can weigh in on what they can or is willing to do, type of thing. Not make it so much a city government's administered event as much as a city-sponsored event, if that makes sense. And if any of that was not.
Yeah, that's, I mean, that's withdrawing more tourism than the events for, kind of same thing, the thing I read would be more of like a local thing. What I'm trying to do is bring people in to Curville.
Can we handle thirty thousand people?
This wouldn't be, I don't know if you can fit that many people in our park. Compared to like Fourth of July, Forest on the River, I think the number I keep hearing, maybe Charlie can correct me, is around eight thousand people.
That's what.
Joe, I thought it was been the estimate.
Yeah. So we can, we can handle eight to ten thousand people, I would think, so.
And in his early estimates, the guy's talking, your first year, you're not, you're not shooting for the moon on that first year. You're trying to build to something, so you'd be excited if you got ten. If you got ten thousand to whatever you're planning, it's not necessarily going to, I mean, sponsorship makes it so it's a break-even event, but you're not really trying to be rolling in it. It's seen more as a marketing thing, so you're really just, your goal is to get sponsorship to cover the costs. That's ideally what you're looking for.
Okay, what I'm thinking is, we just need more details and at some point, like a RFP.
Yes, sir.
So we look at total cost and everything else.
The other thing, am I understanding that maybe you're saying it should be more of a private, not city-sponsored, but private individual, so?
That's something we can look into. I mean, that's, yeah, that's pretty early right now. I'm just trying to get the, get it on the table so we can discuss it and explore it.
Bring us more information.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
Just one point of clarification, Mayor. So the flyer that was mentioned about the concert series, that's not what we're talking about. So there, there is a concert series that is, what, four or five months that Ashley's launched this year. This would be a culmination of that, a half-day event on a Saturday. So it's exactly the kinds of things that, that we've been talking about. So I, you know, we got two separate efforts going on here, and, you know, if y'all want to do something different, then just let us know, but.
I'm not sure anybody knew about the fall event that the city was planning.
Yeah.
At least involve us in that and so we can see if we can merge it together or we want to take one around the other.
Maybe they're working out some details themselves, but, yeah. All sounds good, but, you know, there's a lot of organizations right now between performance-oriented venues like Calo who are looking for sponsorships from private donors here in Curville. And I only, I know of a handful myself, so it's just going to require, you know, maybe being realistic in the beginning about what you might get from, for support, especially if the city's doing something in addition. I'm just, I hear so many things out there right now, like the Clay Street and the Calo, the Playhouse Two Thousand's working on a gala and, not to mention, I mean, it's not saying you shouldn't ask, but there's a lot of asking going on.
When will, Mark, do you guys have kind of an idea when you'll have a, a little more information for us on yours, on what the city's planning on?
What do you think? As you know, we've had some publicity go out in the newspaper otherwise, looking at sponsorships. I mean, the level of event that we're able to put on is based off the sponsorships that are out there, very similar to what Councilmember Vocal is, is, is alluding to. And so, you know, more sponsorships, if we get interest from the business community and that's able to be more privately funded, means more bands, means a bigger event, you know, but these things, we typically at the city try to employ a crawl, walk, run strategy, right? And so with the concert series, we, we ran a kind of a pilot study last year, and we did, you know, kind of a smaller event. This year, it's a little bit bigger. We're trying to plan for a culmination event, a kind of a capstone at the end in the September timeframe as the weather kind of changes a little cooler. You know, we want to, as long as we get the sponsorships for it, you know, and that gives us a little bit more, and then as it grows, you know, in future years, it becomes a bigger event.
If you, if the city staff had been working with Vincent for about a year or so, is there a reason that they didn't continue to work with him as they developed the event that you're talking about?
Yes, we were waiting for our staff to be hired, and now they've been hired.
Okay, but he was, he was kind of left out of the loop, right?
I've been talking with Mr. Vocal.
I would, I think we need to move on, but, hey, Vincent, I would like a music festival for old guys like me with music of Little Richard, Fats Domino, Jerry Lee Lewis.
Steve Miller Band?
Huh?
Steve Miller Band?
Yeah, yeah. You think we could do that?
Sure. That guy I'll talk to out of Austin says that's one of his favorite bands to get, is Steve Miller Band song.
I got mine too.
All right, well, hey, come back to us, okay? All right.
Mr.
Board appointments?
I'm sorry. Mayor, I have a speaker.
Oh, sorry.
Roman Garcia.
Okay.
Thank you. As the Roman Garcia, nine thirty-four Pecan Street. As the Chair of the Curville Youth Advisory Committee, this is something like Councilmember Vocal said that we're hoping to move forward with, and as we mentioned in our presentation. So I'm a little curious, I'm, what exactly, I've got a couple of questions. Mr. Vocal, would the city's involvement be? Because I know we've kind of talked about that and how that would work out. And then also, I was curious, city manager, Mr. McDaniel, said that there was already going on discussion about with Mr. Vocal doing this event for over a year, I guess, around a year. So I'm just curious, which, which one came first? Did Mr. Vocal's event start first, or were we already starting with the event that the city's currently planning?
So. Part to speak on the city's role. Pretty much offering the space, offering probably police, EMS, services such as that, maybe even the downtown parking garage. Talk with K Pub, they would be interested in servicing both stages if we did do two, whatever we have electric-wise. I don't know. I'll, I think my event came first, but that's just something I've kind of been working on and been in contact with this company for quite some time and wasn't really too. I knew I was aware of the, the five events throughout the summer, but I didn't know what the, that there was going to end with a bang or, I didn't know much about that.
Okay. So it seems, and I know y'all kind of discussed this, of kind of merging the two together, so how's the progress on what the city's event is going on? What, what stage are we in in that? And how far have we gone into that already?
Well, I think they've advertised theirs.
I think we've answered that. We're planning at a staff level for an event. And.
I think we just need some more conversation.
Right.
All, all the way around.
Is it aimed for a certain date or time or?
I was asking that question, too.
In the fall.
But, yeah.
Of this year or next year?
This year.
This year. Okay, that's all I have. Thank you.
You know, going back in previous months, we had some very important issues we were, that were taking mo, most of the attention. Not that this is a mi, minor issue, but we had TERS, we had twenty-fifty, we had so many other little things on the list, so.
Okay. Any other speakers? Okay. Nine A, Ms. Brown?
Nine A is appointments to the Recovery Community Coalition. There's a vacancy on the coalition for a member who meets the qualification of a representative of Hill Country MHDD centers, and there's one application. You have it before you tonight for, from Brant, from Ms. Brennan. So I would leave it with you to, for you to.
We need to remove who we appointed last meeting?
No, because he declined.
Okay.
Mr. Vocal and Ms. Heigner?
Yes. Isn't it, but it's Randy Beano, is, that's the application.
Yes, ma'am. That's who the application is from.
Yes, so the name that's on the memorandum is incorrect.
Yes, ma'am.
Yes, yes. So I move that we appoint Randy Beano to the Recovery Community Coalition Board to fill the MHDD center requirement.
Second.
Okay, you second it, Mr. Vocal? Okay. All in favor of that motion, let it be known by the raised hand? Okay, it's unanimous. Portman to kayak, Ms. Brown?
There was a resignation by one of the regular position members, and there's an alternate, Daphne Dozier, and she has said that she would be willing to serve as a regular member. So she's the application that you have before you.
Okay. So Daphne Dozier goes for all of us to membership.
Yes, sir, and I do have a speaker for this item.
Okay.
Mr. Garcia, Roman Garcia?
This is probably the most that I've spoken at the city council meeting. No, real quickly, I just wanna endorse Daphne for as an alternate moving up as a regular member. I wanna say that I've been on this since the very beginning for three years, and we have never had an alternate member so involved in our meetings as a regular member. You know, as an alternate member, you don't, you can't vote. You, as what I understand, you don't count as a quorum, you know? So you're very limited to what you do other than discussing. And she has been to every single one of our meetings. She participates in discussion. So, and I told Mrs. Dozier that too, and she should be really proud of Daphne doing this. So I think moving Daphne up to a regular member will absolutely help and move our initiatives forward, and she's, I think she's a great mover, so.
Sure.
Thank you.
I'll say.
Pretty Roman, are you gonna be accepting applications for the position she's vacating or is that?
For an alternate?
Yeah, for another alternate?
Um, that would, I assume would ultimately be up to city staff on whether we would be doing that. I think it could help, just in case, because I know some others who might wanna fill a position in case the need arises, like in this case. So I think if city staff would be able to do that, set up application points for an alternate or put out something like that, I think that'd be useful.
The only reason that we did not is because they are, they only have until the end of May.
Right.
And so that is why it was suggested that we did not get an, get an alternate at this point, but.
I don't mind opening it. I might encourage someone to do it next year if they get in and realize it's something they want to do.
Right, they're interested in it, I agree.
Okay, all right. All in favor of this motion?
Do you have a motion? There's not a motion.
I move, I move that we.
Wait, 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 what?
We need a motion.
I don't have a motion.
Yep. Judy?
No, I'm going to move it.
Okay.
I'll second it.
I move that we put Daphne Dozier as a permanent member of the Curville Youth Advisory Council.
All right. You second it?
I second it.
Okay. All in favor, raise a hand, and it is unanimous. Okay. City Managers' report?
Thank you, Mayor and Council. It's coming around now. Just wanna highlight a couple of items. Most of the, well, several, not most, several of these items will be talked about in your special call work session for February 5th, where we're gonna talk about economic development projects. But number nine on the Aquatic Center, we have met with the consultants to talk to them about, you know, where they are in the process and making sure that whatever they're coming up with is, is realistic in terms of what we can afford. And so they'll be coming forward with several options for, for you all and to consider as, as we move forward there, so. And then item 20, Hotel Conference Center. As you know, we did get a resolution of support from the Commissioners Court. Commissioners Court did have some questions about, you know, will this compete with the event center? And, you know, some other questions I think we addressed. This is really a completely different type of facility. Charlie, I think, said it best when he just said it's just a whole different audience, and it's business that we're not getting now as far as this new Hotel Conference Center. And, you know, as you know, the Youth Event Center does not have a hotel next to it, and the new hotel that we're possibly looking at does not have an exhibit hall. So they're really two different markets, and I'll be getting back to the Commissioners Court with regard to some more information out of that study. So those are really just my updates for this time around.
I wonder if the city has enough to do. I've looked at these projects, 20 projects, and this isn't all, of course, but. All right. Items for future agendas.
Okay. I have, I have a couple. One would be to have council consider certifying the minutes transcripts that I guess we're getting out of Granicus now as being our certified minutes, just discussing that. And then the other actually is over kind of what we just did. I'd like us to consider having this sheet, just add it to the packet so that we can see it, so the public can see it upfront in what we're gonna talk about and get us past that little compliance issue of the city managers report, but mainly so that the, the public can see it instead of having to go find for it on the city website after the fact. That's it, that's all I got.
All right.
And something that I would like for us to just maybe talk about, think about, and we may be getting more advice than, than we want, but we've got our senior or a.
Senior services?
Yes, thank you. And I'm wondering if maybe we should see if, or consider the possibility of putting together a, an advisory group of sorts of younger, of a younger group. I don't know, 30 to 50 or? Yes, something of that nature. Like I said, maybe we'll get more advice than we can handle from, from these, but, but we're looking at that group and their kids and things that they want and need, and, and we want them here, and I think it would be worth our while to at least put it on the table and talk about it.
Okay, okay. All right. By the way, at the last council meeting, I set up and introduced an ordinance banning cedar pollen from early December till early March. I've now moved to the construction of a wall around Kirk County. So I've, I've come back to you with that. I don't know whether it's gonna be concrete or steel bands or whatever, but I'll, I'll let you know. Okay. Do I hear a motion for us to go into executive session?
I'll make a motion that you all go into executive session under 551071 to discuss the.
Do I hear a second?
I'll second.
Okay. All right. All in favor, let it be known by the raised hand? Okay. I, I will tell you that we probably will not report an action out of this executive session, so I'm not saying for you to leave, but, but anyway, that's probably the case. Okay.
Meeting is adjourned.
Okay, the council took no action in executive session, and at 8:30, we're adjourned.